We will call order the regular meeting for the Oneonta City School District Board of Education, February 10, 2021. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mrs. Burnsberg?
Here.
Mrs. Karpowski?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Bachman?
Here.
Mr. Daysburg?
Here.
Mr. Bassler?
Here.
Thank you.
And since we haven't been in person, I skipped the pledge of allegiance, so we can do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very, very excited to be back, meeting in person, and we're getting this first meeting with us in person. Well, welcome. It's been a long road to get here. We appreciate everyone's efforts and sacrifices that our community as a whole has made since last March. However, we're not through this yet, and there's still some work to be done. We're happy to have our students back in our classrooms, as in the hybrid model, but we agree it's not enough and it's not ideal. I don't think there's anyone in the room or in the district that doesn't believe that having all of our students back in the classrooms all of the time is the absolute best option for their education, as well as their social and emotional health. The decisions that have been made are in alignment with the guidance we've received from every agency, including the CDC, which recently stated that schools should open. What's not widely reported is the next sentence from that statement, which was, "with masks and appropriate social distancing." Recently, the board approved the plan that allows our student athletes to begin competition again. This has prompted confusion and frustration because it seems to be in contradiction with our hybrid classroom model. And while I don't disagree, we, once again, are following guidelines and advice that we've been given. The state provided us an opportunity to have athletics, and we're taking advantage of that opportunity. Thank you to Mr. Mackey, Mr. Ridley, and everyone else who worked so quickly on our plan in accordance with the guidance we were given. I would also like to thank Mr. Heacock and his hardworking group of students for the hard work that they put in to livestream the athletic events. This has been a great asset as we continue to hold competitions without fans, and as of right now, the plan is to continue without fans because that is the safest option. I know that it feels like the rules are always changing, and that's probably because they are. The pandemic is unlike anything any of us have ever seen in our lifetime. There's no playbook, and as the science evolves, so do the rules. It doesn't make it any easier. However, we are adapting as the guidance allows. To add to this frustration, we are very aware of the fact that performing arts seem to be left out of this guidance. I know that other board presidents share this frustration and are asking our school boards association to advocate for them to be included. As I said before, our goal is 100% in person, 100% of the time. We're always looking for ways to reach that goal, and as we see and are seeing numbers get better and better, our hope is that the guidance changes and allows us to allow more students to safely attend class and participate in improved extracurricular opportunities. Our meeting tonight has two opportunities to address the board, one at the beginning and then one near at the end. These opportunities are for people from the public who are attending to Zoom to make comments, and you can do so in the Q and A section at the bottom of your screen. At the appropriate public comment time, your comment will be read to the board. So, thank you. We'll move on with the meeting resolved to accept the agenda as amended.
That was a little...
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Resolve to accept the minutes of the January 27, 2021, regular meeting as presented? Any discussion? All in favor? Close? Extensions? Thank you. This does bring us to our first opportunity to address the board. This is more, are there?
Yes, there is a comment from Kathy Lynch. She says, "Thank you for all the hard work by administrators Jerry Mackey, coaches, and A.J. Heathax for making sports possible again at OHS. It has brought joy to every day, as I now see and hear students in the hallway after 2:20. The halls of OHS have been a ghost town since March 13th. Thank you. We miss our kids."
Thank you, Kathy. We enjoy it. Thank you. Resolve that the reading of the Teaching and Administrative Personnel Memorandum 2021-03B Way and that the action items stated February 10, 2021, be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Brown, as you'll know, we have some retirees. We have Barbara Brown, we have Cheryl Harder, we have Eileen Bradshaw, that have served our community very, very well as licensed teaching assistants for many, many years. But we also have Sue Garcia in our certified personnel memorandum this evening, and she has served this community and our students so very well over many years as a guidance counselor, and they are all going to be missed very much, but we certainly wish them all the best in their retirement. Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Sentences? Resolve that the reading of the Non-Certificated Personnel Memorandum 2021-03B Way and that the action item stated February 10, 2021, be approved as recommended by superintendent of schools.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Sentences? Thank you. We'll move to the superintendent's report. There's a resolution in there that'll resolve that the Oneonta City School District hereby nominates Alan Rubin for the position of board member of the Atsigo Northern Catskills Bosse's Board of Education.
Second.
Discussion? So, this is a formality. Al nominated himself for the board, and the Bosse's requires that we support it, and obviously, we do. We're always looking for community members to participate, so this is just our endorsement of his nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any close? Sentences? Thank you. Mr. Ridley?
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Just very quickly, relative to our capital project next week during the break, many of our controls are going to be cut over from some of the old system, the Johnson system, over to our date automation system. So, again, that will just improve the efficiency of our systems, at least on this campus for the time being. Other than that, the punch list items continue, and we're really in the home stretch. Thank goodness with this project. Other than that, that's it, Mr. Brown.
Right? Any questions? Resolve that the reading of the Financial Memorandum 2021-02B Way and that action items stated February 10, 2021, be approved as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, a few things that draw your attention to. The number three, the donation from the Valley View PTO, a super sizeable donation for climbing level, and they've been trying to get that for years. And we did send it to the insurance company, and they approved it. So, it's all good. So, that's a good thing, because I know they've really wanted that for a while. You'll also see in there, it's a PowerPoint with the property tax calculation, so you can see that our 2% for next year's budget is .387, so we didn't even get to a half a percent. And that equals $85,436, so we don't have a lot of levy power next year. It's basically going to be almost the same tax levy unless we go for a super majority vote. And that will be on the website. We'll post that on the website tomorrow so that people can see exactly how that's calculated. There are a lot of things that go into that 2% calculation. So, that will be posted so everybody can see that. The rental agreement with Atsigo County is for one of the rooms that was vacated by the YMCA. And just one change to note on there, we generally do things through June 30th, but they're looking for a one-year lease, so we'll change that date to end of February 28, 2022. So, we'll have to amend that agreement that we're talking about on here. Not a lot of activity for the extra classroom activity before, but hopefully, there'll be a little bit more next time. And then the letter of intent for the buses, the date on there is incorrect. It should say the 18, 2021. So, there's a typo on that, but this is the buses that we put on as a separate proposition on the budget, and we send them a letter of intent so that they can get started on the buses because they take a long time to build, but we're under no obligation to get them unless they're motor approved. So, this is just to get the ball rolling, and then we'll get them if the motors approve them. And these two 66-passengers will replace some very old and not in good shape 66-passenger buses, so it's a one for one.
I know you like to line the leases up with the fiscal year. Could we do the lease with the county until June 30, 2022, to line it up with the fiscal year and then go one year from there?
There, I'm not sure. I mean, we can ask, but I think they asked for the one-year agreement, and their fiscal year falls a little bit differently than ours, I think, so I mean, we can certainly ask them to do that, and I know we've done that with Atsigo County with the social workers, where we'll do it for one year and then take it out to, you know, the end of our year. So, I can ask about that if you want to approve up through June 30, 2022, and then we can give them the option of just the one year.
I think it's something you can offer to them, but obviously, we have to prove what's here, so.
Yeah, well, we can do the one year that they asked for, and then maybe at a prior, and then the future meeting, maybe the next meeting, we'll just do an amendment to that agreement?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever's easier. I just know you like to line them up with the fiscal year, just the county year. Yeah.
Okay, we'll work on that, and we'll prove this first night, and then see if maybe we'll have an amendment for the next meeting.
Are they retrofitting the space at all?
It's both.
No, they're running some of, some technology, but other than that, no.
Yeah.
Any other question? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Sentences? All right, that brings us to our second opportunity to address the board.
There are no other comments or questions.
Thank you very much. So, that brings us to roundtable. Sue?
I just want to congratulate all of the retirees and thank them for their commitment to serve the district. I went to a basketball game, boys' game, my son is a senior, and I have to put into it. The guidelines that we had to approve are just that, guidelines and the policy, and as with any other policy that the district has, we at times may have to revisit it. And if changes are made by the state, give us more allowances or anything else, I think people should rest assured that that is exactly what we're going to do, but in my opinion, what's most paramount is to help in the safety of our students and our coaches, and so that's the most important thing for me, whether I can watch my son in person or not. All I have, thank you.
Sue, I mean, that's still funny. You had, you had a head of sports last night, so I was hoping I had an opportunity to watch both boys and girls games, and I'm just going to piggyback on what Kathy said earlier, but thank you for getting sports back. Hearing this time of the basketball, bouncing off the floor, squeaking of the shoes, we all missed it. And we also miss the playing of the music with the band, wiring, everything. We missed it. We want our kids back. And this is when we get the opportunity to do it, Sue said, I agree, we'll do it. But until then, we're just taking baby steps going in the right direction. I truly believe that. So, Kathy, again, thank you for your comment. After the game last night, it wasn't even 30 seconds later, I'm texting Tom and saying, "Thank you, Mr. Heacock." He needs, he, kudos to him, because it was amazing. It was the same kind of camera I watched during the NFL playoffs, where it just looked like it was 4D. They did such a great job by moving around, and I just stepped in, put on a tripod and go back and forth. So, Alan, thank you so much, you and your staff, and look forward to more of it, and getting into, I want to watch some of these swimming beats too as well. So, I'm sure more will be following that. Congratulations. Actually, I think we need to stay on the sports portion of it. I know the poor game last night, finished made a good point, or made a comment, a nice tribute to Johnny Haynes with the empty chair across the court, and Johnny was definitely, by all means, the voice of Oneonta Sports. And we're going to miss him, there's no doubt about it. Take it, throw it way too soon. And I said, I said to myself earlier that it's going to come to a point where everybody can say, "What would Johnny say? What would Johnny say on this one?" Because he always had a one-liner and throws something in there, but to give him a little bit of the tribute last night was really special. Thanks, guys, for doing that. Congratulations to our retirees. Well deserved. A lot of time put into the system, and go enjoy life, because you never know how long it's going to be for you. Alan Rubin, congratulations on your appointment on the position of Luntsey Bosse. I know Alan's got a very, very intelligent gentleman, open-minded, and I know he'll do the right things for the right reasons. So, other than that, I don't know, community, or to me, anything else to say about tonight. I just, well, now, again, just, like Sue said, we're doing our best for what we have in front of us, and we know what's going to happen. It's just, again, it's baby steps. Good luck.
I respectfully request to be moved next week.
It's all right.
Before the morning, before show. Definitely echo what they said. And it's always hard to follow, follow show, first of all, like, congratulations to retirees. And we say this every time to those of people that are retiring, that have given great service to our community, to our school district, and thank you. And, you know, for athletics, I, you know, we have two seventh grade daughters that are both playing modified basketball right now. It's been three days. And today, I had to hear moans and growls about walking up and down the stairs and taking the dogs for the walk. And I'm like, "It's good. It's good for you." And it's just great. It is. And I, and, you know, one of them also plays fire net, and, you know, I want her to be back and, 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 you know, we all want the same thing. And we're going to get there. We're going to get there. It's a slow process, but as we all keep saying, we want to do this, they want to. We'll do it. And I also really enjoyed being able to read Facebook comments from all the parents who had seen this last night. I think that's something that's overlooked sometimes, is just to see and feel that joy and excitement from parents that were there, and got to see their children. So, that's all I have to say. And this guy is getting old, so.
I will. Me, love.
It does mean a lot.
All right. Well, thank you. Great to see you all. And thank you to everyone that kind of put this together so that we could actually meet in person, and certainly, the audiovisual folks for, you know, all us to see the sports. I look forward to seeing some, like, couldn't last night. Retirees, certainly, it's, congratulations to those on behalf of myself and the board. It's, it's the next chapter in their lives, and we wish them well and certainly appreciate all their years of service here at the district. Al, I know personally, and I know you will do a fantastic job representing our area on the Bosse's Board. And he's done a lot of great things in our community, and I'm sure this will be one more. And I guess additionally, just regarding a small step we made here to get back to some element of normalcy. You know, it's a balancing act, and we've been juggling here for a long time. A lot of effort went into getting the different options in place, and we've had to bounce back and forth like we thought. And I think, as has been said, our optimal is to have everybody back in the building. You know, there's a lot of negative issues that are, you know, unfortunately happening that are a function of our kids not being in the building all over the country. And it's a tough balancing act that has to happen, and, you know, I think we all are, it's fair to say, we can't wait for our kids to come back. And that being said, as the goal tools keep getting moved a little bit, you know, I think we just need to really look for any possible way to provide normalcy within the framework that we possibly can. And that sounds kind of generic, but I think that's the mindset of everybody here, and that's, you know, what we would love to see, and it can't happen soon enough. So, I think, I think it's safe to say we'll keep looking in any ways to bring normalcy back, advocate where we can, and look for that day, and hopefully, that are in your future. What I got.
This is just a baby step. I mean, you know, we want everybody back, but this was the first thing that we could bring back, and so, you know, we're going to do it as fast as we can, as everyone else has said. Mr. Heacock's staff is students, and they did a fantastic job. I just felt a check on my phone. There were 5,300 views of that basketball game last night, and I know many of us echoed that family from up and down the East Coast who were watching the game last night, and so, kudos to Mr. Heacock. And I know that there's a lot of comb chuckling or whatever to make sure that this is going to be available for as many sports as they possibly can broadcast from bar suite to modify. So, I'm glad to see that. I want to see more others get there as fast as we can. Congratulations to our retirements this year. Congratulations to Al on his nomination for the Bosse's Board. Excited to follow you and your activities as you move towards that, Al. And that's, that's all I have.
Well, I'm just going to piggyback on what everybody else has said. There's not much more I can add. First of all, I would like to thank our retirees. A lot of, a lot of years of commitment to the Oneonta City School District, so we thank you for your commitment, and congratulations on your retirement. And also, I'd like to thank Alan Rubin, congratulate Alan, thank him for stepping up, and very community-minded guy. He's got a lot of great ideas, so it would be interesting. I, too, was able to attend the basketball game last night. My daughter's a senior. I've been watching her and coaching her in basketball since she was nine years old. And last night, it was kind of bittersweet to realize that that's the last time I'm going to get to watch her play in a competitive basketball game. I want to thank everybody that was involved, you know, from the state on and down, that allowed, you know, a small piece of normalcy to be added back to our daily routines. I know it's a, it looks like it's a selective group of people, and we're picking activism over education, but that's not, that, those aren't the facts. But it was nice to see the team one more time and get to see them play and be able to know that, you know, that that was the finale, and even though there are more games to come, it was nice to get that chance one more time. So, I really didn't think, I was not optimistic about seeing winter and fall sports this year. I thought for sure that we would just be going to the spring sport, and then every season took a hit. I actually am overjoyed that we're actually able to do some form of normalcy. Is it perfect? No, it's not perfect. Do we want our kids back at school? Yes, we want our kids back at school. Do we want them back in school? I want them back at school yesterday. I want to come back to school Wednesday. I don't want a wacky Wednesday anymore. Not wacky Wednesday. Every day at night, we're supposed to go wacky Wednesday. That's what's up. So, I want my kids back at school five days a week, not two days a week, not three days a week. I want 100% of my kids back at school, but is it safe to have 500 kids back in our hallways? I don't know if it's safe to do that yet. Can we manage a classroom? Maybe we can manage a classroom. But I was ready when we have 500 kids going in every direction of our hallway. I'm not sure we're safe to do that yet. Maybe we are. Maybe we aren't. I would also like to thank the people that were involved with making last night happen, our administration of Tom and Jerry Mackey, and they had to throw a lot of stuff together in a short period of time and come up with a safety document that we approved. Well, I actually, because it was the meeting on Friday, but, you know, 14-page safety procedure. So, thank you for coming up with that. Thanks to the coaches and a lot of the parents that were involved that helped make last night happen and give the seniors some appreciation last night. And of course, A.J. Heathax did a great job. I was able to get a little back behind the scenes of what he was doing, and he is a super passionate individual. What he's doing is just, you know, because he is so interested and passionate about it, and his helpers were Rebecca Zimmer and Ryan Miller, and they were operating the cameras. And before I went to the girls' game, I watched the boys' game, and it was, the clarity and the high definition was excellent. It was like I was watching the Super Bowl, and the moving camera, and when you got to the game, you got to see how Rebecca or Ryan would move up and down the sideline with a camera, and they were switching to different camera angles. And they created a graph and had a scoreboard there, so it was a very high-class professional production. I was totally amazed. And A.J.'s got a ton of ideas. I'm not going to go through a lot of the ideas right now. He's got a whole stack of ideas, you know, as far as advertising. When I was there, there was over 7,000, there was over 7,000 views when I was there last night. He was, he's got a little ticker there, a little counter. It was over 7,000 views. Now, a lot of those were me, because I logged out about four, five times. So, a lot of those were me, but it was just amazing. The whole thing. It was great fun. And I appreciate, you know, all the work that went into doing that, and hopefully, those are just the small preliminary steps to getting back, getting, you know, 100% back to normalcy. How long that takes, I don't know. Is it weeks? Is it months? I don't know, but hopefully, it's soon enough. That's all.
So, we have one more comment.
Yes, there was. This is a question from Janine McCromy. How will students who are not participating in a high-risk sport but are attending in the hybrid model be protected and continue to attend in person? I'm worried that students who want to attend in-person learning will be contact traced and forced to quarantine because of students' participation in high-risk sports.
I think, you know, the safety measures we have in place, obviously, you know, the term "high risk" is, I think, a little more excessive, but the safety precautions we're taking for the athletics and for the daily screening, and, you know, we're going to rely on those things to make sure that if there is, you know, contact with someone, that we mitigate it as soon as we can, and if someone does show symptoms, we get them away from the population.
And if I just may add, you know, our students all, everyone who comes into this building, you know, does a daily health screening. However, students participating in athletics do an additional screening before they even begin to, before they engage in their practice or competitive event. Digital thermometers have been purchased for every coach, and of course, I have the luxury of the surveillance cameras, but, you know, the kids come in, they're completely masked, they get their temperature checked, their coaches log that into their daily attendance. Other teams that are visiting us, when they get off the bus, their coach provides our athletic director or the opposing coach with
with a document saying, these are the students that are on this bus. They have all been health screened to participate for tonight. No one is symptomatic at this time. So is it perfect? No. But, you know, this is the plan that was presented to Dr. Fardett who approved it. So, and Mr. Brown's right, you know, we'll mitigate any situation that we can moving forward.
And this, the guidelines came from New York State Public High School Athletic Association. That's where they came from and what we chose to, what we chose to adopt, right?
I mean, we, we, and we added some, you know, district-specific safeguards. Some of it did come from there, but, you know, what really guided our document is multiple, it's almost like a checklist given to us from the Yaxego County Department of Health saying, if you want to participate, you need to have all of these things in place, which, which we've been able to do. So again, is it perfect? No. But, you know, under the circumstances, this is the, the system that we have to keep our students and our athletes and our coaches as safe as possible.
Well, and I think it also highlights the fact that we aren't allowing spectators. So to keep that minimized and I think that gets lost sometimes is that that's for the protection of our students.
And then on top of that, masks. Participants are wearing masks while they're participating. That's a huge bonus to the protections that are in place. Obviously not in pool, but all the other, the sports are, are wearing masks. So that's, that helps.
And I will add, as far as last night goes, that our student athletes were exceptional in making sure that their masks were worn properly the entire time. And Coach Mackey was on them. They had assigned seats. They knew what chair they were going to go back to. He did everything that he could to follow the guidelines. And I really, you know, my son was out there and I felt very safe with him participating last night.
Right. Thank you. So I, I don't have a committee report. I will add on to the congratulations to our retirees. We do wish you a long and healthy retirement and thank you for your service to our district. And thank you to Al for stepping up and, you know, nominating for the Bosse's Board. And, you know, I don't think this can be said enough, but thank you to everyone in the district. You know, we singled out Tom, we talked about Jerry, we talked about A.J., but everyone, you know, the, the teachers and administrators and the janitors and everyone, right down to, you know, plowing the snow. But, but the effort to get our students back in the hybrid model, to keep them in the hybrid model to, you know, to, you know, for the teachers dealing with students in the class and also online, you know, it's, it's just been extraordinary. And I, I've said it before and I will continue to say it, you know, you're, you're our heroes. You're doing a great job for our kids and we can't thank you enough. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purposes of special ed and personnel. All in favor? Close? Or adjourn? Thank you.